Okay, I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting on Wednesday, October 2nd at 7:06. The first agenda item is a continued public hearing for Scott Tessier, case number 2024-09, 19 Cobblestone Lane. So, would you like to join us? So, when we ended the last public hearing, we continued it because there were some questions about the use of the property as a... Mr. Tessier said he's a contractor and I think there's a few opinions that he's in the trucking business. So, that was one of the concerns. And then, there's also an issue with... He does have a truck on the property which is registered at 25,000, 26,000 pounds. And he's looking to get... He has some large trailers that he's looking to store on his property, or is storing on his property. And, one of the members brought up the fact that in our appendix that... That a... Sorry. Sorry, I should have flagged this. That the property is in an IRA zone and it says in the appendix that a contracting business and equipment storage yard is not allowed. So, I guess, a decision's got to be made whether he's got a contracting business or a trucking business. And, I mean, I guess we could move on from that point, but that's certainly a sticking point at this minute. And I think at the last meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the applicant said he had spoke with his attorney and his attorney told him because he moves shipping containers and has a contractor do that, that makes him a contractor. So, so I guess this is if, in fact, contracting business is not allowed in the zone, I guess there's probably no reason to go any further with this. So...
If I may, I actually put something together to read to the board, if I can read it.
Sure.
Hello, my name is Scott Tessier. I'm the owner of 19 Cobblestone Lane and we're here tonight for the continuation of our last meeting to request for a... To park my daily vehicles on my property. The vehicles consist of two trailers and one truck as pictured in the binders that I had provided. At the last meeting, there's a lot of focus on what it is I do for work and how to define what I am, if I'm a contractor or not a contractor. I did review the Douglas mass zoning bylaws and there was no definition of a contractor stated within the bylaws. There was a definition of contractor's yard, which had been brought up if I was a contractor's yard, equipment storage yard. And the definition read, "A premises used by a building contractor or subcontractor for storage of equipment and supplies." I'm not a building contractor or subcontractor, so I didn't fall under that definition, I believe. The definition of a contractor from the Merin Webster dictionary is one that contracts to perform work or provide supplies. There's all different types of contractors, general contractors, electrical contractors. I'm a storage contractor. I'm hired to provide storage solutions to my clients. However, I think that the bigger picture is being overlooked. I'm requesting a special permit to park my daily vehicles on my residential lot for when I come home from work, as allowed in the zoning bylaw. Now, this is my primary residence. I don't have a commercial business on the property. There's no business register at this address. There's no inventory here. Customers don't come to my home. There's no transactions that take place on the property and I don't have any machinery on the property. I don't have any fork trucks, skid steers, tractors, nothing. It's only my truck and my two trailers that are my daily vehicles and they're empty when I leave for work and they're empty when I come home from work. So, I'm no different than anyone else that leaves to go to work in the morning. My work doesn't come home with me and it never will come home with me. I do have a business address and I do have an agreement with the ports to hold my inventory. The other topic that was brought up at the last meeting I'd like to address is safety. I've been operating these exact trailers and trucks since July of 2021 on my property. This is not anything new that I've been doing. Since then, I never had any safety incidents or complaints about parking on my vehicles on my property. It was only until this year in May, when I applied for a building permit for my garage, that I received two complaints. And my vehicles, they're extremely safe. They have a number of safety devices. They have 360-degree cameras, blind spot monitoring, backup beepers, collision assistance, breakaway chains and emergency braking. And again, they're completely empty when I come home and go. All the vehicles are non-CDL vehicles, meaning that they are under 26,000 pounds or less. All vehicles conform with all Mass DOT rules and regulations. They're not overweight or over length. You do not need a special license or permit to operate them on the roadways. In the eyes of Mass DOT, these vehicles fall under the same category as any other passenger vehicle or truck that the average person uses day to day. I'd like to venture to say that I might be the safest person that comes through the neighborhood with all these safety features and how slow I come through the neighborhood. Now, many drivers come through the neighborhood at very high speeds and a lot of times they're distracted on phones or have full disregard of the stop signs. This not only includes some fellow neighbors, but also delivery trucks, the Amazon trucks, garbage trucks, or any vendors with trailers. And I also want to note, the way that my driveway sits, I am actually able to pull straight into my property and turn around at the rear of my property. This will limit my need to back into the driveway. So, I think it's safe to say that after three years of operating my vehicles on the property with no safety issues, ensuring all safety measures are in place, safety is my top priority. On another note, the building permit for the garage had been finalized. We just need to process the payment and construction will begin shortly. The garage is going to be built 330 feet away from the road, so the vehicles will be very far from the view of the neighborhood. I've also planted over 75 privacy trees around my entire property, which pretty soon will block out the view from my backyard into the neighborhood, allowing to everything to stay completely out of sight and give my family and I privacy. With this garage construction, as well as the planting of my trees, the value of my property has increased and it will also increase the value of the neighborhood. You know, here in Douglas, we're a small, neat community. We should all want our neighbors to thrive, succeed, and wish them the very best. You know, my wife and I love our neighborhood, the home that we have built and the friends we have made over the past seven years. Unfortunately, throughout this process, there's been two individuals that have been stalking us on a daily basis and we no longer feel safe at our home and have had to increase security measures on the property. The other day, when I came out, all my tires were slashed on my vehicles. And it was blatant with a knife, jagged, ropes pulled out, everything. So, we had to install more security cameras on the property to watch everything. At the end of the day, I'm not requesting anything different than what the board has approved for other neighbors in the past. The town hall confirmed that other neighbors received special parking permits for their commercial trucks on their property and I was instructed to go through the same process as has been approved in the past. I work Monday through Friday, nine to five, just like the average American. I leave once, I come back once. I just want to be able to come home and enjoy the peace and relaxation of my property. I'd like to thank you all for your time this evening and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have any additional questions for the applicant?
I don't.
I don't have any questions, but I have a couple of comments. Let everybody else have an opportunity if they want to say something and I'm more than happy to share my comments.
Go ahead, Flo's yours.
Last time you came in, you spoke about having your commercial set up over in Webster and then you chose to lease it out, rent it out. Okay. That was a business decision of your own. Now, you're trying to house it at your house. The trailers that you're talking about, one of them is at least 40 feet long for the 40-foot containers. You again tonight said that you consider yourself a contracting business. That table says in IRA that you're not allowed to have it. So, I'm looking for some guidance from you, Mr. Chairman, and Town Council as whether or not we should even continue with this because if it's not allowed, when something says no, adds an N on it, or shall not, my own personal feelings is we don't have the ability to override that.
Do you want to look at this, Brian?
No, I actually have a copy.
Okay.
Thank you. But can I just offer a comment on that, just to go right off of that to kind of frame the discussion? And I don't mean to get in front of anybody.
No, go right ahead.
So, you've got a little bit of an ambiguity in here, right? Because under five and six, with respect to accessory uses, they kind of suggest contracting business is allowed. They don't talk about any zones, right? It's just general language. When you get into the table of uses, it's broken up by zone and it's specific to that use in this zoning district. And so, there's a general rule of interpretation that the more specific supersedes the more general, right?
Yeah. And I touched on both of those at the last meeting.
So, I think you have to start with the premise that in this zoning district, your town meeting, your community, made a decision not to allow the business to operate in this district. Now, I heard, and this is something to flesh out a little bit here, that the applicant wants you to look at this not as contracting business, but as the storage of vehicles. And that he's not going to operate a business on this site. So, you may want to ask some questions about, well, what really, is this really just storage of business? If you're not operating the business here, where is it being operated? So, you may want to flesh that out a little bit because there seems to be a little conflict there.
The only concern that I have with that is the last meeting, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
No, go right ahead.
The last meeting, he was adamant about the fact that he was a contractor, contracting business. And again, tonight, he said that he's a contracting business. So, now, when you run into an issue that could be an obstacle, are you allowed to just change what you're going to decide you're going to be tonight, right? So, I'm going on based on, before anything started, it was just honest answers as to what the situation is. And in my mind, that's already been stated, that he has a contracting business.
If I may.
Yeah, and just before you turn it back over, let me just split a little bit of a hair, not to be argumentative, but...
No, I'm not. I'm just...
His business could be a contracting business, but is it run from the house? And so, if it's not run from the house, well, where's it run? And so, yes, he could make a living doing that, but is he making that a living out of the house? And that's the difference. So, I think there's a version of this that could be consistent, but there's also a version that would sink it, right? Because if it's being, if this is the base of operation, it's not op... I'm sorry. That's pretty clear from your table of uses. But if it's just the storage, for example, if I have another professional office or another site somewhere else, and this is a hypothetical, and I run my business out of that, but I keep one truck at home, I'm still not operating my business out of the house. So, I don't know what the truth is.
Well, but just listening to what was said during this is, at the first meeting, he leased out his commercial place of business in Webster. He's leased it out. Tonight, he said that he has an agreement with the ports to store his product. So, he's shifting him back and forth from there. So, as I'm listening to this, and I'm going to make an assumption that his base operation is out of his house.
If I may.
Do you have a home office? Do you have a different office somewhere else? So, that's up to you to answer.
If I may.
If your equipment is kept at that property, I would agree, that has to be your base.
So, our base of operation is to Market Street, Webster, Mass. I do have an office there. The building is 24,000 square feet. The building is leased out. There's a gym in there and Amazon rents out some other space there. Now, the bottom of the parking lot, I have a lot of storage containers we rent out there. Top of the parking lot, same thing. So, now, when I lease it out, I no longer have the space because I gave my parking spaces away to the businesses that moved in, as well as my inventory that's there. Now, as far as inventory at the port, even at the last meeting, I did state, I go to the ports to pick inventory up. Since we had the complaints, I've never come home with a container and we never will come home with the container. As of right now, especially with the porch strikes going on, I have two locations for my inventory. I have one location in Worcester and then I actually just leased space in Uxbridge over from River's Edge to store more inventory over there. So, it's just my truck and my trailers that are coming home. I don't operate out of there. Like I said, there's no customers here. I don't... All my paperwork, everything is filed in Webster. Everything's registered at the Webster address. This is just me coming home from work and I go from work.
If you're not bringing home just a vehicle, you want to have a vehicle, a couple of trailers?
Two trailers, two trailers, yep. And the trailers, yes, it's 40 feet long, but on the same note, there are many individuals in the neighborhood that have fifth-wheel campers that are even longer than what I have, or RVs. And those have a much greater blind spot than my trailer. My trailer sits about three and a half feet off the ground. It's completely empty.
We want to keep this conversation about your property.
I understand, but at the same time, with your length...
Comparing it to a camper? A camper's not in that table, right?
Correct.
What's in that table is a contracting business in an IRA zone.
Now, if I may, I reviewed that document and that grid that you're referring to, the beginning of the section specifically talks about a commercial zone and that's what's listed in the contractor yard. But again, when you bring up the contractor yard, in your definition at the end of the bylaw, it specifically states, "The general contractor or subcontractor." I'm neither of those. I work for myself. I'm not working any, under anybody. But at the same time, none of this is on my property. It's just me coming home and leaving to go to work.
I don't see it that way.
This goes back to the same comment that I made to Brian, is changing on how you want to explain it based on the resistance that you get. You started off, you went through the book, you talked about the definition of contractor yard. And then you went on to the Webster dictionary to try to support your argument that you're a contractor.
Yes.
Now, you're trying to change it back that you're not a contractor according to the book.
No, I am a contractor. According to the book, you don't have a definition of a contractor. That's why I provided the Webster dictionary definition. I am a contractor, but a storage contractor. Your definition as a law is specifically going against general contractors or subcontractors. So, if you go back to Article 5 and 6, you know, it actually states, "A contracting business is allowed as long as you have more than two acres of property."
Under accessory uses, okay?
Right, and this garage is an accessory use.
But when you get into the tables, that's very specific about which zone you can have the...
Correct.
It's not allowed under RA.
But the garage is an accessory.
... explaining earlier that the more stringent of the two is what would typically apply.
Is there any board members that have any questions or comments? If not, I'll open it up to the...
Open it up.
Okay. Is there anyone that... First of all, anybody that needs to speak will be heard, but you need to give us a name and address for the minute taker prior to speaking, so... Is there anyone that would like to speak? Ma'am?
Nancy Stockwell, 11 Cobblestone Lane. I can understand how there's a problem with this zoning book not having a definition of a contractor. It also doesn't have a definition of an equipment storage yard, which is page is number 16 that says contractor business and equipment storage yard in an RA is a no, and that's on page 120 of your book. I think if we can't come to an agreement as to what a contractor is, I think it's easy to say that this could be an equipment storage yard. He's storing his equipment there.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Sir?
Richard King, 23 Cobblestone Lane. To me, it seems like it's more of bringing your work truck home at night. That's the way I'm looking at this. It's no different than if I have a service truck and bring it home at the end of the day. I'm not running a business out of there, but I want to park a truck there. That's kind of how I see the whole process. Because he's not running his business, he's just parking his vehicle, he's asking to park his truck there.
And trailers. Anyone else that could be heard? Okay. Now, would the board like to proceed? Are we ready to make a decision?
You guys need any more information to make a decision or any questions?
Any other questions for me too, if you have them? I know you've heard my speech before about interpreting zoning bylaws. You know, here where you have a lack of some support from definitions, right? And you're going to have to rely upon your ability to interpret your bylaw reasonably to fulfill the intent and will of your town meeting. And nobody's going to know that better than you guys. That's why you're on the court. And a court's going to defer to that, provided that is a reasonable interpretation. It doesn't defy the plain language and it's consistent with the language that is in your zoning bylaw. And so, a court is going to defer to that as long as you can justify in your written decision, in whatever position you guys decide to take, that that's how you interpret your bylaw in this town. Maybe you have a history with that. Maybe you've done it before, but you can draw on all of those things.
I got a question.
Go ahead, Ron.
Just lost it. Give me a minute, wait.
So, here's the situation that I see. He's not working out of his house. Yes, he's bringing a truck home and a trailer home because in my eyes, they both go together. If you owned a construction company and you use a trailer for your equipment and everything like that, and you come out of your house, you're going to bring both of them home. So, he's not working from the house, as he said, he's not bringing stuff home, he's not taking it out of there, he's not doing his paperwork there. He has an address and an office at the other place. Whether he's doing some of it from the house, I don't know. But the fact of the matter is, what does it say about just parking a vehicle that you own on your property?
You can park one vehicle as long as it... GVW is less than 26,000, but he has two other trailers, so he's got three vehicles.
So, you can park one vehicle, who, anybody?
Anybody.
So, you're saying in my driveway, I can only have one vehicle?
No.
An IRA zone?
Commercial.
Commercial. But he's...
And it can't be over 26,000 GVW.
Which it's not, am I correct?
Correct.
I mean, it has to, yeah, it has to be 26,000 or less.
If I may, the bylaw right here, it says garaging or parking of commercial vehicles as of right, one commercial vehicle 26,000 pounds or less may be garaged or parked on a residential premise. By special permit, the Board of Appeals may authorize more than one such commercial vehicle or larger commercial vehicle. Finding, garaging or storage is not detrimental to the neighborhood.
I got my...
Okay, Ron.
Is there ever a premise that... That anything... He's stating what he wants to do now, but is there any embellishment of that, like, beside bringing something home? Is there... Can the board put a condition on that so that if he's... Now, he's just bringing his trucks home, but if he starts putting supplies around there, that's breaking the premise of what he wants to do.
Yep. Certainly, any special permit could have conditions, you know? But I think, at the last meeting, the applicant mentioned on many occasions that he was a contractor. If you're a contractor, you're not allowed to operate in an IRA zone.
But he says...
What's that?
I'm sorry. He says he's not operating out of there. So, I understand what you're saying, but just because he's a contractor doesn't mean that he can't park his truck on his property. That's what I see.
That's the way that I viewed it. I viewed it as, I'm just coming home, I'm not running the company there. So, even though I'm a contractor, what difference does it make? Because it's no difference than like the RH White guy's coming home with...
This is what difference it makes.
Correct, but what is at the top of...
A contractor is not allowed in an IRA zone.
But in that, at the top of that grid, does it not say that it's a commercial and then it breaks it all down? Now, the equipment lot, again, it's in your definition on page 112, it only mentions general contractors and subcontractor. It doesn't, if you wanted to refer back to Section 6, the landscaping or contracting business, it says, "A landscaping or contracting business may be operated as a home business as of right on a lot with more than two acres. A landscaper or contracting business may be operated as a home business by special permit if the applicant has less than two acres." Now, regardless of what I do for work or not, this says contracting business. We are a shipping contractor. Now, if you wanted to specify, that section should say, "No contractors" or "General contractors only" or "Landscapers only." It can't be vague to say contracting business.
Well, it is what it is. We didn't write it.
Yep.
So, it's how it's interpreted.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, we had somebody who wanted to speak. Sir?
Oh.
Ross Tubo, 43 Old Carriage Lane. I live across the street from, or kitty corner from Scott and his wife. I just have a question, actually for you, Scott. I know that there have been trailers that have had containers on the neighborhood, in the neighborhood in the past. Is that something that you intend to continue?
Nope. So, in the past, this is before I received any complaints, since then, I'm not coming home. And that's why I set up these lots, these inventory lots, in agreements with the ports to hold all my inventory. So, once we became aware, because like I said, I started doing this in 2021 and I never had any issues at all. It was only until we went for our garage permit that we started having issues. I'm not going to bring home any containers. There's nothing coming home with me. These trucks will always be completely empty. It's just me coming home, going to bed, waking up in the morning and leaving. All my inventory is kept in Worcester and now some in Uxbridge. Besides that, nothing will come home. And there's, like I said, there's no customers, there's no transactions or money that's transferred on my property, nothing happens. It's just I wake up and I go to work.
Mr. Chairman.
Ken?
If it's only to park your truck there, then why do you need your trailers there? Why can't you leave your trailers at your yard and drive your truck if it's your transportation back and forth to your place of business?
Yep. Well, honestly, it's just ease of access for me to have my trailers because sometimes I can go to Jersey, sometimes I can go to Worcester or Boston. So, for me to drive, you know, seven, eight, nine in the morning, I usually leave at nine because it's convenient now, but when, if I have to leave earlier to go to Webster or wherever to put the trailer on, well, that takes another hour out of my day to try to get to somewhere, to go somewhere else. So, it's more of a convenience. Like, it's my property, I paid all the taxes on things, we're building this beautiful garage to build the property up and it's more, everything's going to be hidden. It's not kept on the street, it's not kept up front, it's way in the rear. And it's really just ease of access to have. Yes, can I get away with just having my red truck and my other trucks? Yes, I can do that. But again, it's ease of access for me, since I only work for myself, I don't have any employees. So, I'm not going anywhere to start other workers up right than it's just me leaving my house in the morning to make my day convenient and come home early.
Okay. Anybody else, Margaret?
Is it the Peterbilt that pulls those trailers?
Nope. So, my father has a Ram, a regular pickup truck.
And that pulls those trailers?
That pulls it. So, as I stated, they're all under CDL, so they're 20... That truck is 26,000 pounds, so there's no permits needed for that. A regular person can get in turnkey and go. By law, if you get pulled over, you're still okay. Same thing with the truck. There is nothing that's over the limit and especially completely unloaded, you're only at about 12,000 pounds in general, I would say.
Does your dad live with you?
My dad does not live with me, no.
Okay. So, this is the issue that I have. I keep saying that you're going back and forth. You read out of the back of the book about landscapers and contractors and all this other stuff. And then you went on to say, "We are contractors."
Yes, I never denied that.
Wait a minute, listen, let me finish. You said you are contractors. Then you just stated that you had no employees.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And then Margaret asked you if that Peterbilt pulled the trailer. You said, "No, your father's truck pulls the trailer."
Correct, yes.
Then I asked you, "Does your father live with you?" No. Then he's an employee that's coming to your house to pick up the trailer.
We both own the company together, so some days...
So, we're going in circles. You're right back.
Yeah, he's coming to the property to hook up to one of those trailers.
If the Peterbilt's not there. If the Peterbilt's gone, he's driving that, I have the Ram. If it's not, then like we switch off vehicles.
Then you're coming home with the other truck to...
Correct. We switch off vehicles, you know, daily, depending where our routes take us. But at the end of the day, everything's completely empty. There's no work coming home.
Is anybody else that would like to speak on this matter? Ma'am?
Nancy Stockwell, 11th Cobblestone Lane. I was just looking at page 12. The applicant had mentioned Section 6, it says, "A landscaping or contracting business may be operated in a home business as of right on a lot with more than two acres." So, if you look within that, number 6 on page 12, and you look at the definition of a home business, and you turn to page 113, "A home occupation is described as any occupation, business, trade, service, which is incidental to and conducted in a dwelling unit." To me, that means the business is being conducted inside the dwelling unit, not outside.
You're correct.
So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Ma'am?
Amanda King, 23 Cobblestone Lane. No disrespect at all, I feel like there's two things that are going on here. There's the hyperfixation of, is it a business or a contracting business? And we're getting caught up on contractor and the definition of contractor. And then, the other aspect of it, which I think that he has kind of already addressed, is that, yes, maybe it is contracting business, but it's not being conducted in the home. Whether or not we can verify that, that is open to interpretation. He obviously has a business that is dedicated with an address, and everything's being there. So, my interpretation of this was to allow him to just park his vehicles there, and I agree that it would be the same thing if you're going to a 9-to-5 position, and whether it's ease of access, having your vehicles readily available, to be able to conduct your business wherever it may be. Like, I just feel like, instead of the contracting aspect of it, are we going to allow him to park his own vehicle at his own residence for a business that he's not conducting in his home?
Okay. Wouldn't be much of a neighborhood if everybody brought home a commercial truck and two 40-foot trailers.
And I completely understand, and I...
If there was, whatever there are 40 homes there, if everybody did the same thing, it wouldn't be a very attractive neighborhood.
But I also can attest that if this, he's already building a garage, you're not even gonna see it, so the aesthetics of it, I don't think is an issue. Because if they're gonna be in a garage, and he's already planted trees, and he's made it so that privacy, it's far off, nobody's gonna be viewing it, are we really gonna get caught up on the aesthetics of it?
Okay. Thank you. Sir?
That's Stockwell, 11th Cobblestone Lane. I'm on 145 Camber. Even, we have a set cellar houses, and a cable goes driving by, or a trailer with a boat, whatever it may be, people are, like, a family get-togethers going out and enjoying life. If he comes by with a Ram truck, or comes by with a fifth-wheel high flat, people are gonna wonder what's going on in our neighborhood. Maybe his value might go up with the rest of the values in our house, I wonder what's gonna happen with those, with a business being operated out of his house, because even if he's not using the trailers, they're being stored in there.
Okay, sir, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
I'm ready to move forward on it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing's closed. Would the board like to move tonight to make a decision on this?
Yeah, I'm ready to.
Okay.
Everybody else ready to?
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
You want to explain it to the audience before I get rocks thrown at me on how I need to make this motion? Just how we always do, everything in a positive manner?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. All the members know that, so. Just for everybody's...
It's just easier if everybody understands, that's all.
Every motion is made in a positive manner, and then people know a yea is for it, and a no is against, so.
In that way, there's no consideration of influencing fellow board members. Anyways, I make a motion to approve the, let's see, is it a special permit for Scott Tessier, case number 2024-09?
Okay, we have a second?
A second.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to approve the application of Scott Tessier, seconded by Margaret Bacon. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Did you vote, Margaret?
I'm in favor.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, three yeses and two noes. To get a special permit, you need four votes. So, your application is denied.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
To the chair, before you move on to the next matter, would it be okay with the board if the minority votes provided some kind of report? We're gonna have to write a written decision. And because of the way you made the motion, and the affirmative to approve, we don't really have a record to explain the minority position that carry the day, which is a denial.
That's fine.
And so, is it okay if the members who voted against it are just articulate the reason for that?
So, the reason why I voted against it is specifically to Appendix A, commercial. Under the contracting, number 16, contracting business and equipment storage is not allowed in the IRA. And that's based on the applicant's testimony stating on multiple occasions, and actually pretty adamant the first time around, and somewhat so this time, that he is a contracting business.
Yep.
Based on what I'm told and what's in that book, I don't believe that we can approve it, and that's why I voted no.
Can I ask the board some questions?
Nope. This is done, you're all done.
I feel exactly the same way, but the public hearing's closed. So...
Have you heard facts about the storage of equipment related to the business? People coming to get that, move it off the trailers, I'm referring to, to come and retrieve it from the site, take it to another site, and another person...
Yeah, there's no equipment, and he has, through his own testimony, he had trucks and trailers. There's nothing being taken off the trailers or anything like that. But he just backed up the belief that I think it's an actual contracting business, based on the fact that he had someone come and pick up a truck or a trailer, or whatever the case may be. Whether he's related or not, he's still treated as an employee. So, that just strengthened my thought as to whether or not it was a contracting business or not. If none of that came in, then I could have entertained Mr. Palmer's opinion about it being a, just coming home with your truck and trailer at the end of your business day.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just wanted to get that on the record, so that we know what to put in the written decision.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Could I just ask how to proceed? I just had one question.
You know, the public hearing's closed, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, you could tell them that the decision's gonna come.
Nope, it's not about the decision.
Yeah, the decision will be written by town council.
It wasn't about the decision. My question is proceeding, are we allowed to just have one vehicle, as the bylaw states?
We can't answer that.
Yeah, we can't answer that question.
But after the written decision issues, the zoning enforcement officer would be the point of contact for decisions like that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Throw him on the bus when he's sitting across the table from me.
Okay. The next agenda item is a public hearing for Lloyd Moran, case number 2024-12, 175 and 181 Southwest Main Street. Following was published in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and also posted in the Town Hall, and it reads as follows. "The Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, October 2, 2024, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application. Lloyd Moran is requesting a special permit in an IRA-zone district pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, in the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.3 and Section 3.4.3, non-conforming structures, to reconstruct a single-family home with a detached garage on a pre-existing non-conforming lot on property located at 175 and 181 Southwest Main Street. Assessors map 226, parcels 16 and 17. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass." The hearing tonight's case would be Mr. Palmer, Mr. Fitzpatrick, myself, Mr. Forget, and Ms. Bacon. We have correspondence from our staff that certified mailing was returned, and, see, applicant, or their representative here? I'm sorry, do you want to join us? So, we have your application, but did you want to give us a rundown on exactly what you're trying to accomplish?
Well, I'm looking to put a two-car garage addition with a living space above it, attached to the existing house that we live in. It was on a separate lot, which the building inspector said I had to combine these two lots, which I did, through the land court. The Conservation Commission seemed to approve my, you know, my billing proposal. I mean, it's the house we live in now, so it's not a, I think you said reconstruction, it's a, I'm not quite sure, it's more of a remodeling, I would think.
Yep.
But the two-car garage with living space, it's the same number of bedrooms, it's... The house was originally a shed from the fire department, I guess, the hose station, they call them. And the previous owner put it there, and they lived in it, or used it as a shed, then they added onto it, and somebody else added onto it. So, there was a number of additions to it. And they never really did it quite right. There's, it's about a foot off the ground, so I wanted to raise it up to get the insulation that has fallen down underneath the house with a vapor barrier, needs to be replaced. So, with the construction, I thought raising the house a little bit would be the way to go.
Okay.
It's a nice spot. I'd love to stay there, but it needs some work, you know? And I think my goal since I've been there has been to make it a better place for the next person, and that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay. Do you have order of conditions from Conservation?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Just bringing this up as a matter-of-fact type thing, but the plans that you submitted, are they exactly what you're gonna build? Because we have had a couple cases recently where people decided to add on a little porch, they decided to do whatever, it wasn't on the plan, and that's not what we approved, so we...
As far as I'm concerned, it's what's gonna be done. You know, I have no intention to add or take away anything else. It's what's there on the plan is the...
Okay, because if it was approved, we would refer to the plan, and it's gotta be what's on the plan. You know, it's happened a few times, and it's just, I don't know if it's intentional or not, it doesn't matter, but, you know, they had to come back for another variance.
Yeah.
So, it just, if there were gonna be any changes from what you submitted, now's the time to, you know...
My only problem is the elevation for the crawl space, I guess. We haven't kind of worked that out yet with the building inspector, but...
But this, what we see here, the structure we see here is what you're...
The structure's gonna be exactly what's there, yeah.
All right.
I'm adding a few square feet where my front door is now, to make an entry into the bathroom. That's gonna be closed off, and the front door is gonna be on the side where the garage is gonna be.
Okay.
So, it's very...
Yeah, but that's on this plan.
It's on there, yeah.
All right. So, are there any board members that would like to speak?
Sure, I got a couple of questions. So, I noticed the existing house is a four-bedroom house.
Yep.
Correct?
Yep.
And you're proposing an additional bedroom over the new garage.
Yep.
Correct? So, is that gonna kick that up to a five-bedroom?
No, it's, there's two bedrooms on the first floor of the existing house.
Yep.
And I'm knocking out the wall. It's a small bedroom, so I'm knocking that out, and it's gonna be, I was gonna say it's the master suite.
Sure.
And so, it's gonna be opened up, it's gonna go into that hallway where I just mentioned about the addition, the square feet, and it's gonna be going into the bathroom from that direction.
So, when all said and done, you're gonna have a four-bedroom house?
It's still gonna be a four-bedroom house, yeah.
Okay. And then, I don't see on the plan where your existing septic is and well is.
Well, the septic is up by the road, it should...
And the well is...
The well, it's a, it's right outside the, well, right outside the front yard, the front of the house.
Okay, because I was looking through your building permit plans. Now, it looks like this room is an in-law apartment, because I noticed a kitchen and a bedroom.
Well, because I'm putting the three bedrooms on the upper level. I'm thinking, you know, the way I see things now, they have these flex rooms, or playrooms, or whatever it is for the kids, TV rooms, a library.
Yeah.
So, it's, that's basically what it's gonna be. It's, you know, for the kids, basically, the kids.
The kitchen? The kitchen upstairs?
Well, it's a snack thing. If you have a pool table up there, you have, you know, a place where you're gonna, instead of running downstairs, it makes sense to me to keep it on the same level.
Yeah. I don't think two kitchens in the same house is gonna fly.
Pardon?
I don't believe two kitchens in the same house is gonna fly.
It's a kitchenette. It's, you know, a small sink and a small refrigerator.
But you're only one floor up. I mean...
Well, I don't know, I have a hard time running up one flight now.
Well, so do I. Ken, did you have something?
On that, you're not gonna be allowed to have a second kitchen up there. You can have a bar sink up there and a refrigerator, but you cannot have a stove and all that of that. That constitutes being an apartment.
All right. All right. So, what do we...
You can have some cabinetry, you can have the sink up there, you can have a refrigerator, but you can't have the stove and set up to be a full kitchen like that. That's a full kitchen. So, given the design that you have, with the door that closes off between it, you have it set up, it could easily be, you've got a full bathroom up there, you've got a kitchen... Two bedrooms.
So, what would it have to change to make it a...
Make this like a bar sink, and, you know, you could have a refrigerator, small set of cabinets, a bar sink, but eliminate the other, you know, dishwasher and stove and all that.
All right. What would it take to change it to an apartment?
Can I interrupt for a minute? Before we get too far into that, we're here for, to look at your dimensional setbacks and what you're trying to do on the... That's a side issue that, I know Margaret brought it up, but that's a side issue that you can handle in the Building Department? That's not what we're here for, unless we're...
Mike, if we're gonna approve this plan as drawn, and it has two kitchens on it, we have an issue.
Yep.
So, we do have to address this.
It's an in-law apartment, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's a...
Well, can you change it to an in-law apartment? What's the difference?
That's not this board.
Pardon?
That's not this board.
No.
That's the planning board.
Yeah.
So, if that was your intentions, you would be at the planning board, but you would still need to be here to get your dimensional relief that you need on the lot.
I think you're saying the dimensions for the setbacks? Is that what you're talking about now?
Yep.
Yeah, they're all good.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a special permit, because you have a pre-existing non-conforming structure on the property.
Yeah. So... Say that again?
There's an existing home on the property, so you're all set with that. You're expanding a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Yeah.
On a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Yeah. But the setbacks are still good.
Yeah, yeah, we're not...
I misquoted.
We're not questioning that.
If I may, if you did want to treat that as an in-law apartment, to keep that kitchen there, there is a process you can go through that, that'll, you could permit it, but it wouldn't be this board.
Well, we'll go through that then, I guess. I mean, it's only been five years getting this far, so, you know, what's another five? You know?
It'd still be back here, though, potentially, right?
Yeah.
What's that?
It'd still be back here, though, on the non-conforming part, not the use, but the non-conforming.
Right.
So it's...
Yeah, well, we can...
I didn't want him to leave.
Yeah, he's not going to.
He was going to another board.
Yeah, probably go to another board and then come back here.
No, 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 relax for a minute.
If we approve it, we're not going to approve it with two kitchens.
Well, don't approve it then. I'll go to the planning board.
We can continue your hearing, give you an opportunity to go to the planning board. If you get an in-law apartment approved, then, and nothing else has changed as far as the size and location of the home, then you probably wouldn't have a problem here. But if we approved it tonight, we will approve it without two kitchens.
And then I still have to go to the planning board to change it again and then come back here again?
No, I would go there first if I were you.
Well, then we should be done here then, right?
No.
We're trying to help you through the process, so...
I don't understand. You want me to, you want to approve it now, and then I go to the planning board?
No, if we approve it now, we're not going to approve it with two kitchens.
Right. So I say, all right, those two kitchens.
So if you get a continuance from this board and come back next month or two months from now...
Just leave this application on hold. You agree to continue it to extend the time in which we need to make a decision. Give you the opportunity.
Put it on hold, whatever you've got to do then.
So would you, would you like a one-month or two-month continuance to give you time to go to the planning board?
How often do they meet?
I would take, I would give him at least two to three months for that.
Two months.
I would go, all right, the two months at least.
Give him 60 days on it. He's not going to get it done in one month. You already have your plans already done.
At all, he's going to have to get a new plan, too. Then to get that drawn up and get back here.
Right, yeah.
What do you mean, a new plan?
I'm not saying you'll need one, but if there's...
If you were denied on your accessory apartment, then you would just have to modify your plan to take that kitchen out of there, correct, Brian?
Or if he goes in front of the planning board and he wants to change something, because now he's going to do an actual legitimate apartment.
Right.
He might bump it out a little bit here, tuck it in over there, and then the geometry might change.
Right.
And so in order to do all that, at least two, probably three months.
I think if we get done earlier, you could ask him to go in earlier anyways.
Well, we have to continue to a date certain, though. So we could postpone it, but we can't prepon it. You know what I mean? I'm making up words now.
So 60 days would put you out to December 3, and 90 days would put you out to January 7.
Mm-hmm.
Or you just continue it for 90 days. You can come in ahead of time if it gets done. No?
No, because if we announce a date in time certain...
Okay.
So it'd be better to do the 60 days.
All right.
And then if we need to continue that one another 30, that's easy.
Yeah.
But if we do 90, we can't pump it up to 60.
December 3. December 4, I'm sorry.
Yep, okay. Continuance of the public hearing on the afternoon.
December 4.
December 4 or January 7?
No, December 4, 60 days. Because if he gets done ahead of time, then he can come back. And what Brian's suggesting, if he still needs more time, he just comes in or he talks to Jen and we continue, he fills out another thing.
Can we pass that over there? That's just a, you're asking for an extension. All you have to do is sign it. Read it and sign it.
So you're just asking for an extension until December 4, that's when you would
So do you follow what we're trying to do with you?
No, I haven't understood the whole thing.
You said you want to keep two kitchens in there, and you could do that if you got an in-law apartment approved by the planning board. Then it would be allowed to do that.
Well...
So if you go...
Some of my thoughts are, my daughter still lives with me, she's 25.
Yep.
She thinks her bedroom is her apartment. You know, so we have the one bathroom that she uses, that's her, you know, so my thoughts were, well, if that's how she's living, the next family that moves in, if there's a four-bedroom, there's going to be a number of kids, why not make the whole thing their little space? So having their, you know, their little kitchenette along with their TV room or, you know, playroom or whatever it is.
Makes good sense. We're just trying to help you through the process so you can just make it a little cleaner and you...
The community development office could help you during the day with the paperwork that you need, and then you'll have to go to a planning board meeting and see what their thoughts are. And you're welcome to come back here and we'll continue this and a decision will be made, but if we made it tonight based on the plans, it wouldn't fly.
What if I approve it there and I say, no, no...
Come to the building department tomorrow, I'll be in the office tomorrow. Come into the building department, I'll get you going. Sorry.
If we approved it tonight without the kitchen, and then I go to the planning board, does that change things, too?
Yeah.
So I'd still have to come back anyway, right? Would that make it any different? No, not really, right?
It's better if you go to the planning board first, get that done. It's just much cleaner.
All right.
That's all.
All right.
It's not going to, it's not going to change the calendar, it's still going to run the same, so you might as well just go get it done.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Take a motion on that already? I'm sorry.
No, we didn't. No, thank you. We didn't. So we need a motion to continue this public hearing.
I make a motion, we continue this public hearing?
Case number 2024-12.
To December 4, total?
To December 4, 2024.
Second. Okay. We have a motion by Margaret to continue the public hearing till December 4, seconded by Jim Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next agenda item is a public hearing for David in Dallas Keeney, case number 2024-14, 13 U Street. It was posted in the Telegram Gazette and also in the Town Hall, and the notice read as follows. "The Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, October 2, 2024, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application. Dallas and David Keeney have filed for a special permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Appendix A, Schedule of Use Regulations A, agricultural, non-exempt farm on less than five acres, and Section 3.2.1, Number 4, home occupation by special permit in a rural, in a rural commercial 1, RC 1, zone district to operate an animal sanctuary on the property at 13 Depot Street. Assessors map 198, parcel 24. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street." So hearing the case tonight would be Mr. Palmer, Mr. Fitzpatrick, myself, Ms. Bacon, and Mr. Forget. I have correspondence from our community development office saying that the apartments have been notified by certified mail. And is the applicant here?
Hello. David Keeney, 13 U Street.
Okay, if you want to go over your application, what exactly what you'd like to do?
Sure. So we started at the federal level. We applied to be a 501(c)(3). We were approved there. There is very little communication at the federal level of what we were supposed to do at the state level, so then we finally went down to the state level, had some back-and-forth and miscommunications with the state government. Recently, finally got our AGO number, which, again, the state didn't tell us that we also need to file a city permit, so we're trying to catch up as quickly as we can. I believe legally there is a stipulation that we need to operate a business in order to operate a nonprofit from our address. If anyone can provide clarity on that, I'd be happy to hear it. Otherwise, currently as it stands, we're largely educational, is our goal, educational and relocation of farm animals. It's known as Diego's Friends Farm Animal Sanctuary, named for our dog that recently passed away. Questions, comments, concerns?
Any board members? Any questions about this application? Actually, before we do, we did have some correspondence from a couple of people. One was from Maurice Gilbo, and he works, I believe, for the, or he's a member of the Board of Health. And he said that he inspected the property. I'll read it. "On the afternoon of September 11, 2024, I performed an inspection of the animal facility located at 13 U Street. The owners were very forthcoming with information about the animals there, and I would say that probably about an acre is fenced for the animals. They currently have six horses on the property with two of them scheduled to be humanely euthanized in the coming weeks due to..." Degenerative.
DSLT, yeah.
It's late. Health condition. At that point, they will have four. They also have several goats on the property along with about 30 chickens, and there are three roosters, which we discuss moving to new homes to try to reduce noise. Everything was clean and the animals were clearly well taken care of. The manure from these animals is composted on the property currently, but they are in talks with a manure removal company. I advised them that they would, that they should make a containment area to mitigate any possibility of rainwater causing runoff down the hill. They said they would take care of that right away, and I will start back to check the progress later in September." We have one more.
This is, this is the one you just read. This is another one from the same guy on the 30th.
All right. We have a follow-up letter from that individual, and he said that, "To whom it may concern, I was asked to provide a few more specifics on the sanctuary. The exact number of animals as of my inspection on 9/11/24 are as follows. Six horses, two of which are being put down before winter, 12 goats, three adults and nine kids, 25 chickens, three of which are roosters. The barn has four very large stalls for the horses. The goats and chickens have separate enclosures. All of these animal structures lie within one large fenced-in area. I would estimate a half acre. As for the question of the dogs, I would refer that to animal control. I do not have oversight of kennels." Open it up for questions from board members.
Sorry, there is a kennel license for the property for eight dogs.
It's on the last page of what I read.
And the roosters have since been relocated.
I'm sorry I missed that.
The roosters have been relocated.
Yeah, we have a copy of the kennel license right here.
Cool.
Any board members that want to have questions or comments?
Has animal control been...
Yes. They verify kennel licenses, I understand.
Excuse me?
I believe they come out to verify kennel licenses. Is that not true? That's what he said he was doing.
I'm not sure of that.
Oh, yes. I don't know if his name handy. I can get it to you if you need it, but yes.
Anybody else?
We don't have any report from them at all, right? Animal control?
No.
My initial concern is the size of the area. Two different things. The last one that you read said that they're on a half acre of land.
Right. There's a half acre that's cleared.
Seems like a lot of...
The total property is about two acres.
The total area of the property, but if we look, I have a map in here that shows about a third of it is where the wetlands start.
Correct.
And then you have to be 100 feet out of that unless you get permission from conservation, and you can probably get somewhere near 50, depending on what you're doing.
50 is exactly correct. I met with the state conservation board earlier this month, or the city, city conservation, so they didn't have any guidance. They said everything was within regulations.
Yeah. Again, so I'm going to finish what I was saying. So if I take a third off of there, you have an acre and a third out of which is your house and your setback. So you're probably pretty close to having a half acre for that amount of animals. I don't even know if you can legally do that with grazing animals, right? So you have a number of goats, 12 goats, I think you said, and you have four, six horses.
Currently, six. Soon to be three, actually, but...
Yeah. I own horses myself. I have three horses. I'm on five and a half acres, and wherever they are, they eat right down to the dirt.
Sure.
Nothing there for them to afford. I'm just curious what animal control's opinion would be, having that number of animals on that small of an area.
I don't believe animal control deals with livestock. I believe that is the animal...
They inspect my barn all the time and leave a little, a little yellow piece of paper that says everything's in good shape, so somebody's doing it.
That's what Maurice was doing.
It might be the tooth fairy, but I can figure out who's coming in my barn and leaving this little yellow piece of paper. I think it's animal control that does that.
I may be wrong, but I believe animal control is distinct from, I think it's like animal welfare, was what Maurice's title was, or animal inspector.
Yep. So whoever it is, I would like their opinion as to whether or not you can have this many animals on that small of an area. There must be some sort of guidelines that...
That was his opinion.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I've run into this in other towns, and it was actually, the town I'm referring to, it was the Board of Health, would go out there and do an inspection, and they had some type of calculation to determine if it was overcrowded, you know? So I don't know if we have anything in our Board of Health regulations that addresses this.
Well, we had Board of Health, and went out there, and he made a statement as to what's there.
Right, but I didn't see anything in this...
No determination as to whether or not you can have... No, I think he said that they were well taken care of.
Right, 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 so, yeah.
But as far as how big an area, right?
Right, I mean... If, you know, a lot of times, well, the situations I were involved in, it was obvious overcrowding. There was too many animals, and the owner had to get rid of some of them, but it was a much smaller piece of property, too.
No, this is a half acre that's cleared, so I'm not, I have no knowledge of how many square feet a land a horse needs or goat or chickens.
So the intent of all this is to create an animal sanctuary?
Correct.
And I guess how many animals do you propose to have on that parcel?
This is it. We're actually above where we were comfortable with. Like I said, the three horses are terminal. It was a temporary way for them to be comfortable until they're put down. If someone else had done it first, I would have been happy to let them do it, but nobody else stepped up, so...
And you're not going to be replacing them? That's not the plan, to replace the horses?
No, at this time, no.
No, but you got rid of the roosters.
Correct.
And to the chair? So often there's multiple layers of jurisdiction for things like this. We're just dealing with the zoning component, but as you heard, it's often a Board of Health... We're just dealing with the zoning component, but as you heard, there's often a Board of Health side, there's a kind of a conservation side. Animal, animal control is usually not so involved. It's usually more, more to health in terms of regulations. But in terms of, you know, humane conditions and animal cruelty kind of things, animal control can get involved in that. But that's, that's really sort of an upper threshold beyond the kind of regulatory things that we're doing here. But my question through the board, maybe to the applicant, is just, is this all going to happen pursuant to some sort of animal management plan or hobby farm operation plan? For larger, you know, operations, we would expect to see something talk about, you know, how we're going to manage feed, how we're going to manage waste, how we're going to manage runoff, you know? All those things that you get with animals on a farm, right? And now this is smaller scale, but the issues are probably very similar. Sometimes you see those in Board of Health regulations, because no matter what gets decided here, the Board of Health still has jurisdiction to step in and say it's not sanitary. Or it is sanitary, or it would be if you did these things. So there's still going to be another step to all of this. But one of the difficulties I could see this board having is figuring out where those guardrails should be. And so without a plan for you to review, maybe that's going to be tricky. If there, if one exists or one could be created to sort of show the board how this is going to happen.
You're talking like a business plan as
Right.
How it's going to be outlined.
You know, stormwater, right? You want to see the O and M. So it's not really that different even for a farm, just to see how that's all going to be managed.
Which is a very good point, because then it allows the zoning official some, some guideline than enforcement otherwise. So now he's got 31 chickens. Can he have 31 chickens, right? Because it's never been discussed, so that's a point well made. I appreciate that.
It would be hard for this board to say, well, 12 hens is okay, but 13 is too many. How are you going to do that? And also, I don't, I'm not suggesting we place an undue burden on the property when we're running a sanctuary. So I'm not saying we need the Farm Bureau to come in here and create a 75-page plan over the next three years. I mean, it should obviously be proportionate to what they're proposing. But something for you to, so that you can understand how it's going to work, and so the public could understand how these issues are going to be addressed. And with any operation like this, you know, you've got waste, you've got odors, you've got, I mean, how's that all going to be managed?
Noise, potentially noise.
Yeah, exactly.
Ron, bigger piece of property we target?
How big is it?
Yeah, well, he's got a half acre cleared.
Ballparking. Uh, the, the property itself is, like I said, 2.15 acres, I believe it's somewhere around there. Again, some wetlands, but
Yeah. I certainly don't have the expertise to know how much space you need for that many animals.
I think that's part of the problem, is we don't know how much space you need per horse or per goat or for this. I mean, you know, the, the section is, um, non-exempt farm on less than five acres. Well, a half an acre for three horses or six horses and 12 goats, and is it too much?
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but
Well, maybe the, the potential other way to look at this is we're not
I didn't forget you.
I'm sorry.
Just waiting till, no, good.
Um, we're not trying to make a profit off the farm. Um, so it's not like a commercial farm. It's not, uh, calling it a farm is a bit generous in itself. Like I said, the goal is an animal sanctuary, uh, the goal's education. The animals are purely our own. It's not tied into the fact that I need a business permit to have a business license to operate a charity within Massachusetts, is my understanding.
And so did the, uh, the town council's point. I, I think it would be valuable to us to have what your business plan is, right? You must have an outline as to what you're going to do with this. And I don't mean you just spit it out now, it's something that you can create as to what, what your thoughts are, how you're going to manage waste, uh, what are you doing for your feeds? What, how many animals you're going to have? Are you going to limit yourself? It's hard to say no to, oh, my wife's son watching all these little postings that are online. If she had it her way, I'd be full of horses, I'd be sitting where you are.
Sure, I, yeah.
But anyways, I think it would help everybody involved, neighbors, and everybody sitting at this table if, if you had an actual outline. And so I'll get to you in a minute, that gentleman would be first. The, uh, just to help us have a better understanding, that gentleman in the green shirt.
Yep, I see him. Just letting everybody finish.
Like I said, again, the, the animals are ours. It's not, we're not trying to make a profit off of them. The, the goal is just legally, for legality's sake, of operating a charity, which focuses on, you know, news, um, education of how animals are treated in kill pens, things like that.
Yeah, and the point that I'm trying to make is, is not whether you're selling the horse or, or the animals or anything like that. What is your thought process as to how you're going to control population on your site? I guess it's the easiest way for me to explain it, right? Know what your, what your population's going to be.
So my understanding is
You have a fair amount. I've had rottweilers and pit bulls, so I fully understand what a rottweiler looks like.
Yep, that's, we came from Rottweiler Rescue, so
You have three different rottweilers on there plus three or four other large dogs. Gets pretty congested, so. It, it just, in all fairness, just for us to help understand what you're trying to do, we would need to know what your thought processes.
Sure, but again, it's barely relevant to the business. The dogs are under a kennel license, they're not part of the, the sanctuary.
It's a, it's a consideration. Because
Sure.
You can call it two different things, but they're all occupying the same space, right? So
Correct.
Help, help us understand is all I'm asking for, right? I'm not trying to give you a hard time.
Okay.
I'm trying to get to a point where we understand what you're trying to do, right? I'm not saying that the, uh, dog has anything to do with it. I pointed out the, the fact of what the size of the dogs are, because it's relevant, right? You have six horses, you have 12 goats, and you have six medium to large dogs, right?
And 30 chickens.
Eight, but, well, wait, wait.
Eight dogs, it says.
Eight, yeah. Eight, eight dogs, I can't keep track. There's no partridge in the pear tree, so we're good, right? But really, it's just, just understand what
There is a pear tree, but that's not, sorry.
No partridge, yeah.
Okay.
Just understand what the pop, the easiest way for me to explain is the population of what you're going to have on the site, right? So then is it at a manageable level and something that is workable with, with also your neighbors, right? You want, you want to remain friendly with your neighbors and stuff, and you have to consider them as well. And that's why we're all sitting here. So to have a better understanding, it's easier, easier for us to come to a conclusion, whether it's positive or negative, but come to a conclusion to the, uh, town council's point. We don't even know what we're really voting on at this moment.
There's also, oh, go ahead, Ron. How big is the area?
They're using about a half acre for the animals, according to, uh, Mr. Gilbo from the Board of Health.
Half an acre?
Half an acre, yeah.
Did you have that highlighted area?
It's also, part of this also talks about a, uh, home occupation. On, uh, the letter you got from the building commissioner.
Okay.
And it says that, um, that you're apparently looking for a special permit to, for a non-exempt farm on less than five acres, and also a home occupation.
The home occupation's new. I mean, I, I live there.
Be, the
Yeah, but if it's a business, then you're trying to claim it to be a home occupation, is that, is that what you
Define occupation, I'm sorry. Like, I'm working from home or
Go ahead, can you go with the lead, huh?
Yeah, so what it is, is even though you're a sanctuary, you're a 501(c)(3), it's still a business that you're running on. You're potentially having people go in and see how animals are cared for and all that. You're bringing public into the property into an IRA zone.
RC1.
RC1s. But it's still a, a home business at that point. It's not just your own farm. You're, you're bringing the public in.
Sure.
You're increasing traffic flow, you're increasing people. And as it says with a business, if you're having clients to your property or increasing traffic in the, in the neighborhood, it's classified as business, zones don't allow that. So zones don't allow that. You can go first, Mr. President.
Okay.
It also says that, uh, that, uh, you cannot operate a home occupation if it produces offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, lighting, electrical interference, or radioactive emissions, or environmental pollution. So I think you probably need to address that, because I'm sure just by the nature, it's got to be occasionally noisy and, and dusty. So there's, there's a lot to this application. So I would say if, if he produced a business plan and we could maybe even get guidance from other people
Business plan, maybe a little clarity to that. And correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm, what I'm picking up is they want a plan to know if they were to give you this special permit, what is going to be your max load on your animals that you're proposing to have on the site? And of that, you know, break it down into how many horses, goats, chickens. How long do you keep them? Is it at a short term, you know, they're here until they're healed or, or relocated? Or is it once they're there, they're permanent residents of the property? And just in what he was saying with the, the waste products. How are you, how are you going to take care of the waste products? How is the runoff into the wetlands going to be taken care of? You've got a lot of farm animals that are on a small piece of land with a piece of wetlands behind it. And you've got neighbors to live around it also.
Sure.
You just want clarity so that they can make a decision more based on actual setup. Well, it could be this, you know, and then, you know, right now you've got 30 chickens, and in six months you've got 40. And then it goes to 50, you know?
Right. Yeah.
Excuse me, we've been talking as if it, someone said in here, the inspector, that it was a, approximately a half acre. I think that should be measured and give us exactly what the, what the area is, so we know what we're dealing with.
Okay. Can do.
All right, any other board members have any questions before I open it up? Okay, so anybody here that would like to speak on this case? Sir? Just need your name and address before you speak.
My name is Jesse Halter, I live at 19 U Street, directly next to this property. For further clarification about the land, although the fenced-in area is a half acre approximately estimated, uh, the reality is, if you look at the site plan, that is a significant sloped area. And what actually limits it to almost like a quarter acre or less, uh, where the, pretty much jargony behind the barn. And they've self-imposed that the horses aren't safe to walk in that area because it's so steep. If you look at the property, there's nothing but bare dirt in the open area where they roam all day. And the entire townhill slope is essentially, you know, six to 12-inch grass untouched by the animals. So all the animals on the property occupy a 20-yard deep by 60-yard wide swath, quarter acre approximately. That includes the barn structure, includes the fenced-in area for the goats with a shed structure. And it includes a chicken coop with a run area as well. So the horses are even less than that, because they're sharing all that. The only land they have that they can safely walk on is also occupied by these other structures. And unfortunately, that also places the property 20 feet behind, uh, their house, which is neighboring both, neighboring on both sides, in our backyards, next to our patio, next to our kids' play areas. And according to section 3.2.1, as part of this permit, uh, request for the home occupation, uh, number 3(c) says specifically, like you mentioned, the sounds and odors. They've been operating this business since March time period, and they've had their own animals there prior to that. But the addition of the goats and the roosters was absolutely over the top. And they hadn't even, for the past year, they've acknowledged that the roosters were free range. They've been in our property for the past year, um, uncontained. Only before this meeting was they finally actually addressed it. And they still have plans to open them back up, they have to put fences up. So it'll be almost two years by the time they actually will address the issue of the free-range chickens roaming to the neighbor's yard and being not contained from the property. We had chicken, or roosters crowing in our back patio, while we're trying to do home improvements on our back deck. My basement renovation, we're adding windows and stuff like that. So I'm sitting here chasing the chickens off my property on a regular basis. It has since been contained, but unfortunately, only now, three weeks before this meeting. The, there are many other applications. The, um, I believe the definition of the home occupation, uh, for an RC1 states that the only people allowed on the property to work on the home occupation are the residents and up to two, uh, employees. They have intentions to bring on public, which I believe is not compliant with the intent of the home occupation. Because you're not supposed to be able to have other people on the business. So one of their primary goals is to bring people on, to educate them and to teach them of the animals. These are public invitations. That presents to me a safety concern for my children that live 10, 15 away in the front property. I have three young children, seven to 11, uh, age, that play soccer in the front yard with no fence, no barriers, no indication that general public, who knows who they are? Could be criminals, could be child predators attracted to the property because of the fact that it's a farm and animals and children are sometimes present there. Bringing into our neighborhood that we don't necessarily need. Not just my property, being the direct neighbors that are mostly affected, but there are many young children in the neighborhood. And I'm not comfortable with, I would not buy a property having a operation, an actual farm happening in my next-door yard. So there's, there's a lot of concerns from the direct neighborhoods. And they've been voiced, I believe, more than seven or eight separate complaints have been filed since they started operating with all these animals. And smells have been overwhelming throughout the whole neighborhood, not just contained in the backyard. There have been times I compound, you know, 50 yards away, come out of a car, and I'm just hit in the face with the smell of horse and goat, you know, uh, odor on the property. There, there is no way to address the odors or smells or sounds that come off of this property, unfortunately. They, they have true intentions of running a good concept and a very idealist world of being sanctuary operators, and I appreciate that, and I can understand that. Unfortunately, it does not belong in an RC1 residential neighborhood with such proximity to the neighbors. And they can't prevent those offensive odors and sounds, no matter what they do, because they're trying to operate a farm in a residence, in a backyard that was intended for like pet horses. The previous owner that had lived there prior to them had two horses and four chickens. On the application for this, uh, they specifically tried to compare, oh, that's, you know, it shouldn't be a problem. There should be no effect on the neighborhood because previous owners had horses and chickens. There were six total animals on the property in the previous owners over this, since 2008, since we had moved in next door. The, the website for this, uh, animal sanctuary just a month ago made a posting. We're now up to 60 animals on our farm sanctuary, six zero. They're trying to compare that to six animals that had been on the property and saying justified, there should be no effect on the neighborhood. Unfortunately, that is nowhere as close to true, it's completely disingenuous. They even talked about adding additional animals, pigs and horses, or pigs and, uh, donkeys in addition to what they already had prior to the town being involved to try to regulate. They have little to no self-control of their expansion interests. Uh, our concern is if this is an authorized business, they can and will do whatever they feel like doing, including bringing back roosters or whatever they have, because they'll have free range unless they're restricted. So there are a lot of concerns. And we have a formal written document that has several additional callouts from the town building, building code that we don't need to go over right now, but I'd like to make that public record before we leave tonight for review and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that'd like to speak? Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Jen Halter, I live next door, 19 U Street with Justin. I just want to point out, they also have volunteers coming to their home, to and from their home. Have they had background checks on these people that were right next door to my children playing? It was very upsetting to me, and I don't understand why that's allowed. I cannot open my windows in my home because of the smell of their animals. I'm right next door to them. Their roosters were crowing, I could hear it just opening my window. I can't have lunch or dinner on my patio in my own backyard because the smell is so offensive, the sounds. I can't sit on my screen to import. I want you to understand the picture of the neighbors. They're direct neighbors to these folks. They're nice people, but this has really interrupted our lives. It is decreasing the home value of the neighborhood, especially my home. I worked equity in that home, we worked hard on that equity, and along come these people, and they're destroying that equity. The resale value of my home is being affected by this. I'd like you to really consider that. The taxes the town takes in from home sales, that will be affected by this as well. So please consider what it's done to our, our happiness and our home. It's been really upsetting, as a matter of fact. I think too much has happened and is shared for too long, and no one's been accounting for it, and I don't understand that at all. I'm just living next door, getting very frustrated. They also have eight dogs, they bark at us when we come to and from our home, large dogs. That's been happening for two years now. They just got a kennel license, which is my understanding, a few weeks ago. How about two years ago when they moved in with 10 dogs? I don't believe there was a kennel license submitted at that time. And I don't understand why this is allowed in our town.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak, sir?
Paul Stansky, 14 U Street. Um, just trying to help me reconcile the fact that, you know, there's a bylaw on the books that says you have to have at least five acres to operate a non-exempt farm. This request is, is being considered on a possible land that's This request is being considered on a parcel of land that's just over two acres, half acre usable in a densely populated neighborhood. I just, as the zoning board, I'm just trying to understand what is up for consideration here?
Well, when someone can't meet the zoning requirements, they can come here to seek relief. So, it doesn't mean, people don't always get the relief they're looking for, but that's the job of the zoning board.
Yeah, I understand the process. What I'm saying is if there's a minimum of five, and you guys know the town, I mean, it's a densely populated neighborhood, all of these, you know, effects that you're hearing from all of the neighbors are, we all agree this is the effect, you know, to me it's, you know, what do we, what do we here to decide? I mean, it's, to me it's, you know, all of these factors are impacting the neighborhood. And we submitted a letter for your consideration, Mr. Chairman. I hope you've received that letter and reviewed--
I did, yes.
With all our concerns, I, you can hear from all, all the other neighbors, we all see the same concern. So, I don't want to speak for everybody, but now is the time to say something if you agree with this or leave with what I'm saying.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Strongly agree, 100%. Consider your neighbors, please.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak, sir?
Craig Peters, 9 U Street. We're also getting a lot of extra rodents running around now, all kinds of mice and everything else.
Okay.
Try to at least come to my yard.
So, does your website say you have 60 animals on the property?
It did at one point. We have fish, so.
Okay. All right. Well, I think you've heard the concerns they have and I think the best way to move forward would be to come up with a plan of how you're going to address all of the concerns from noise to--
Sure. Is there any chance we get a copy of the letters that have been filed? So--
Yep, you can pick them up in the community development office tomorrow morning.
Okay. This was honestly a surprise for us. We didn't hear any of the complaints through any channels that we're aware of. We've--
No, go ahead, finish what you had to say.
You finished what you had to say.
I'm not sure what else to say, but like I said, I'm frankly a little surprised. I will admit some bias. I'm originally from Nebraska. I grew up smelling farm animals, so maybe I'm a little nose-biting to it. I would like to believe that Maurice would have commented on it if he thought the odor was excessive or anything, but I'm open to subjective opinions and I'll, like I said, we'll look for the business plan and see what we can do.
Okay. Sir? Go ahead.
I was informed by the town officer that they have been informed that there are at least seven or eight separate complaints from the neighborhood. So, they are not blinded by this tonight because they have been informed that they're complaining. I'm not sure if they're detailed what the complaints were or allowed the details, but they have been informed that there are seven to eight separate complaints filed in recent months. So, it's disingenuous again to say you're blindsided.
Okay.
Sorry for--
Thank you.
So, just to respond--
No, go ahead.
We were informed there were complaints, but no details, just that there have been complaints. And then this is the first meeting we've had to discuss it. The neighbors have our phone number if they wanted to talk directly. I'm not sure why we needed to come here, but here we are.
Well, I don't think we have enough information at this time to make a fair, honest decision. So, if you want to continue this and try to address everything that's been discussed, that would be--
I'd love an opportunity to address the business plan. It seems like the smartest way going forward.
Okay. All right.
Brian? No, I was just going to offer a comment.
Yeah, go, please do.
So, I don't know if you've done this a hundred times or if this is your first time, but just for the benefit perhaps of the applicant, this is the fact-finding part of the public hearing. And so, when you leave here and decide what you're going to submit for the next evening, when this reconvenes, remember just that the board needs to find the facts and understand the facts. And so, the better your submission, the more complete, the more information that's in there, then the more they have to work with. And so, their deliberations are going to be more complete, more accurate, and more reflective of what you're actually proposing. So, just a friendly suggestion through the chair to you so that hopefully we get back something that makes the next meeting the most productive meeting it could be. That's all.
Understood.
Okay, so if you would like to-- Oh, go ahead, Myra.
We wanted to do a site visit, is that a possibility?
Sure.
Just go on our own?
Well, maybe if we set up a time with the applicant, we could--
Okay.
Do it as a group, we just have--
As long as there's a--
Call a meeting to order at that time. Is that agreeable with you, sir?
Sure.
Okay.
So, a site visit is not part of the public hearing. By definition, it's not an open meeting. It's on private property, can't by the public.
Okay.
So, you guys can set that up outside of this and either come individually, come as a group, whatever works, whatever you guys work out, but it's not, it doesn't need to be posted. You don't need to figure out the date and time right now.
Oh.
But I imagine you'd want to do it before we reconvene.
Yes.
Sometime between now and then.
And for clarity, it's just to go there and observe whatever you want to look at. It's not to engage in conversation with the applicant or anything like that.
Correct. You take all your thoughts, feelings, and impressions and observations and you bring them back here--
Correct.
And report them in the public hearing.
Yep.
Yep.
Sometimes it gets confusing and people think that you can have a conversation on site and it's not allowed.
Yeah. We can stay in the house, whatever.
If there's more than three members that go at the same time, we need to post and call that meeting, so.
Which you can't do because it's not open to the public--
Right.
Because it's on private property.
So, you can't go there with three members at the same time.
Well, you can as long as just nobody talks. It's almost impossible, right?
Good luck with that.
It's hard.
Ron, you won't say anything, will you?
Very little.
All right. How much of a, how much time would you like to get this plan together and get it?
Call it a month. Does that, I assume you guys convene monthly, correct?
We meet once a month, the first Wednesday of every month.
Okay.
So, you think a month is adequate for you?
I believe so.
Okay.
November 5th.
Yep. Thanks, Mike.
November 6th, I'm sorry. I keep looking at Tuesday.
I like that tomorrow for some reason. It's just months are going by. That's all.
If you could sign that, sir, and--
That's just a green--
That's all.
A continuance, that's all, for a month.
Question? What's the purpose of submitting the business plan?
Well, we, we don't, there's been a lot of talk about a half acre. We don't know if the half acre is really a quarter acre or three quarters of an acre. And when we have this business plan, as to how many animals he'll have there, we can look for guidance as to is that enough space for them? It's just one of the many things we'd be looking for in there.
So, are you going to kind of monitor this?
Your name and address, ma'am?
Sherry Martin, 10 U Street. My question is, you're going to put a plan in. He's already been disingenuous, as Jesse pointed out, that he's done all this without assault, without any regulations. And now if he's going to put a plan in effect to satisfy you, what's to stop him from stopping to keep this going? It's already below, if it's five acres and he's only got two and only using a quarter of it, I mean, I just don't see, this is really kind of a no-brainer to me. I mean, it doesn't seem how you can come in here and say, okay, we're going to look at a plan and really, because it's something that's so grievous to the whole community that lives on this street.
Go ahead.
Cassandra Morgan, 23 U Street. If this, if this isn't the proper department to deal with all these concerns, is there another department we should be speaking to? Because we were all under the impression that we were getting the business plan tonight and all our questions will be answered and you guys will be voting on if it stays or if it leaves.
Well, we don't have that plan and we don't have the information that we can answer your inquiries about. So, hopefully it'll all be in the business plan and any questions you have will be addressed.
Would it still be like you, like the zoning board is who calls if it stays or goes though? You know, I don't have to reword that question, I'm sorry.
Who approves the motion?
Yeah.
Who approves the motion?
Because if it's, it's already under five acres, so if the business plan still states that it's going to be working on a half an acre, I just like, I don't know how it's going to-- Yeah, I don't know.
The zoning board has the authority to approve something that varies from the regulations. So, hypothetically, if it says five and somebody comes in and says, well, I have four and a half, the board could think that, that'll fly. It may not think it'll fly. So, we're trying to get, gather all the information we can to make an intelligent decision.
Just wasting more of our time to have to come back next week.
Go ahead, sir.
So, you can, a homeowner can have pets, but to operate a farm, you need five acres to buy those, right? So, this is about operating a farm. It's not about housing pets, correct?
Yeah, we're not here about pets. Have a kennel license and--
Right. So, you're going to consider a business plan to operate a farm on a parcel of land that's two acres--
Can I insert a business plan thing real quick?
--and densely populated area where the usability is a quarter of an acre. We're going to consider that a business plan. Operating a farm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we don't, we don't have enough information tonight to make a, I don't think, a fair judgment.
Looking for clarity, what is the board asking? You're asking to receive a business plan to operate a farm on this parcel--
No, we're not. No, we're not. Let me explain why I said I want the business plan. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm asking him for his business plan, not the business plan, what he's intending to do so we have a vision of what he's trying to do so we can decide whether or not to approve it or deny it, okay? We have no idea based on what's coming, right? A lot of accusations and things going back and forth from both sides, misunderstandings, whatever the case may be. We just would need a clear picture of what he's intending to do to see if it even makes sense, right? I still would like some input from whether it's Board of Health, Animal Control, or whoever it is to give us some, to give us some guidance as to what's allowed on this size of piece of property with this number of animals, whether they're clean or not. There has to be something that says you can have a maximum number of large animals on this size of a piece of property.
Mm-hmm.
It has to come from somebody. So, I don't know if we inquire with the Board of Health, if that's the governing body, to give us some insight as to what their rules are. That would help. I see your hands up there and I'll get to you in a minute, right? Just because I'm not looking that way, I can see you. But we need some guidance. And all I'm asking from him is to tell me what you're going to do so I can have an intelligent answer to make a decision. I can't make a decision based off what's in this book. I can't make a decision based on what you're saying or what he's saying. Tell me what is actually going to be there and then I can come to a conclusion as to what I think.
So, the applicant is in front of you and why doesn't he articulate right now exactly what--
Because that's not what I want. I want it on a piece of paper.
We'd like it in writing.
I don't want words. Put it on a, put a business plan down on a piece of paper, what you're trying to do. If this gets approved, this gentleman over here needs something for a guideline as to whether or not he's in violation of the approval, right? We're not going to go back to a recording that happened on October 2nd and find out what was said. We need a document that can come out of the folder and say, no, this is what you approved. Yes, Jim?
So, is the plan also going to address the situations with the neighbors in that too? Is that part of his business plan?
Well, he's heard everything--
Right. So, in other words, he wants to be able to address on the plan how he's going to take care of the smells or the runoff-- Noise, dust. Whatever it is.
He's got to figure it out.
Just so it's in black and white so he understands what he needs to work out.
And I would suggest that you pay close attention to the accessory use if that's what you're going after because there's language in there, whether it's number three or number, I think it's number six, about clients, pupils, and all this other stuff coming to the property. That kind of pushes you off that allowance, sorry. Similar to the previous applicant when it said not allowed and based off the testimony that happened, that's how my decision came to be, okay? You know what you need to do?
Correct.
That's what I'm looking for. That's all I get to say on this thing tonight.
Yeah, if I may just add some insider knowledge, apparently the Board of Health is currently considering laws for Douglas regarding livestock and square footage that was shared with us by Maurice. He said it's not finished yet. I believe their goal was to copy what Webster did recently.
If Douglas doesn't have anything, I'm sure the state has guidelines on it, so there's a law somewhere.
Yes.
Guaranteed, there's a law somewhere. So, if the state, if the town doesn't have anything, then the state law and the town council can correct me if I'm way off base, but the state law would be what would be in effect, right?
Understood, yeah.
Okay, we have, we need a motion to continue--
Motion to continue case number--
Can I speak last time before--
We're going to, we're going to continue the hearing and you're welcome to come to the next meeting.
I would just like to verify what we do with our complaint notices if we haven't already filed them. How do we officially drop them off or review?
The community development office is open 8:30 to 4:00, four days a week, and Fridays from 8:30 to noon.
So, we can't leave it here with you guys tonight to be part of the public file. We have to file it down.
Well, no, we're just volunteers, so I really don't want to--
Dan, if I could through the chair, I'll be here 8:30 tomorrow morning. Come in, I'll stand them in.
Yeah.
This is the number 2024-14. Make a motion to continue case number 2024-14. That's all you want to go to?
November, get the date.
November 6th.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to continue the public hearing to November 6th. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Forgey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Continue to November 6th.
Thank you.
7 o'clock. Thank you. Now, do we go in the other room for the--
We'll go in the other room. I'll open up the other room and we'll just go on then.
You know what? Because of the time and our council, he's got quite a ride to go home, so the minutes and things, we'll just, we'll do it next morning. And we'll do the North Brown thing.
Okay, so can you, can I see your agenda and I'll make that motion for us to go into the-- I got it. I just want to make one quick thing with regards to North Browns. I have been in contact with Paul Timbarlow, Neil Rydicki, and Haley Wood, our site inspector. with Paul Tivarlo, Neil Rybicki, and Haley Wood, our site inspector. And I'd like to make a request that we have them come in front of the board on the next board meeting and discuss their plans of where they're at, where they're going to be, where their completion's going to be. I'm going to try and set up an independent meeting, and I just think it would be better just to put it in front of the board.
Would it be helpful to have our engineer here as well?
Well, we should have our engineer in. Prior, prior to doing that, Mr. Chairman, would it be wise to potentially, whether it's executive session or whatever, have town council in? Because we got milestones that happen on the fourth phase, and whether there's bonding issues, and there's a bunch of different things that go on. Want to make sure all that's covered. Instead of bringing in the applicant and then passing it out to actually know what it is that we're supposed to be at.
We could see what their response is, you have...
Okay, no, that's fine.
And then we could get, so we have council here, we could get...
Well, I got a positive response from Tim Barlow. Excuse me, everybody. We're still having a meeting. Thank you. I got the positive response from Tim Barlow, Neil Rybicki, and Haley Wood to come into a meeting.
Okay.
So, whether you wanted to do it in the executive session or...
I don't think that's necessary. Let's see what the, we have council here. We can, hopefully it all goes well, see where, where it takes us. But, they do have...
We'd have to get back up to speed on some of that. I don't know if Jay's been tracking it, but I have...
I don't, I don't know either. And that's what my concern is that...
Okay, so, yeah.
I did...
Yeah, Jay should be here.
Yeah. Converse with the applicant in the past, has had a habit of trying to help us with what we're supposed to think.
Right.
So, I would prefer that. There is milestones, and they're thinking, well, put the kid prepared for start to go into the last phase.
Okay.
Because Jay has a long commute as well, maybe we can do it first, first thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Be out of here.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we were preloaded for that, so that it could be productive. I don't like coming to meetings and having to say, well, explain everything to me. I haven't heard anything about this.
I think Jay's...
It's not going to be helpful.
Well, if they get up to speed, we could have executive session, cry into the meeting. Well, if you wanted, huh? You can talk with Jay, and if you need more information, please.
Yeah. It's going to be the next meeting. We're not here anyway for this. Yeah, just take it over. That's fine.
Yeah. Converse with him. Anything you feel like you need to handle, just... As long as they're on speed up.
Yep, easy enough.
All right. Guess we're going to go in the other room.
Yeah, so, I'm going to...
We're done then, huh?
Before we, before we go...
We have to...
Wait a minute. Before we go anywhere, I have to make a motion for that. Or, somebody has to make a motion for it.
Do you have a motion in front of you for the executive session?
Yeah, I'll do that.
You got that? Okay, good.
So, I make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion of 3 Huff Road, Land Court Case 24 Miscellaneous-000164, and to leave executive session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Mr...
What's that?
And holding the open session in public would be detrimental to the discussion of the litigation. Is that correct? It's one of the requirements of that.
That's fine.
Yep.
As amended.
All right. Second. Okay.
So, I'm part of this too? I'm coming with this?
Yes, yes. You can come in, yeah.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, go on executive session?
Roll call, vote for that.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye. Do a roll call.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forgeit.
Aye, Margaret Bacon.
Aye, Dan Hennig.
Fitzpatrick, aye.